Okay, we are broadcasting, just checking to see who shows up in our public attendees list.
Andy, just confirming, we can see the agenda.
Correct, yeah, you won't be able to see anybody in the room, unfortunately, tonight, we're having a bit of an issue with our owl camera.
Okay.
But otherwise, hopefully you'll be able to hear us, we'll be trying to amplify our voices through my laptop, because apparently the owl audio is also not working.
Okay.
Okay, welcome to the planning board meeting for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, I'll begin by following the role, Alden Park.
Here.
Just a while, not here yet. Um, Brad Coke.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers is going to be absent, Tom Wolf is going to be absent, Richard Jager.
Here.
Victor here. Okay, um, the first item on our agenda is public continued public hearing for Hail Business Park LLC for project at twenty-one. Malcolm Point Road, and I understand that there is a request to continue this to the April fifteenth, is that correct?
That's correct.
But I have a motion to do that, to continue this application to our meeting on April fifth.
I will the, uh, will the. I will the, uh, will the, uh, public hearing in April then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any seconds? Quick roll call on that, um. Alden.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
And I vote yes also, so that is continued. So that is the only public hearing on our agenda, and the first item under general business is to review and discuss the zoning recommendations from our last public hearing regarding the proposed change to the ITIF regarding residential leases. And Annie, you or Jennifer wants to add anything before your discussion?
Uh, the only thing I would just point board members to, sorry, is if you've seen the comments, the memo that we sent out, just with a little different additional information that we thought might be helpful for a couple of things that came up during the public hearing. Um, I'm not sure how the point what wants to handle recommendations on this one, there might be, you know, sort of mixed thoughts about different aspects of it. Uh, and certainly Jennifer may want to chime in here with anything new, I don't know, since we left off, I think we were trying to make sure that we covered as much information uh, in context for you, especially in light of some comments that were made during the hearing uh, about potentially adverse impacts on the conversion of space downtown uh, upper floors, and um, I don't know that we necessarily agree that that was the crisis issue as it was being represented, but um, but so we tried to point out that and some other information that we thought would be useful to you beyond that, I think we're here if there's any questions, but obviously trying to figure out, you know, whether the board's recommendation and where will the council end up paying in the coming weeks, because they haven't had their planning and development committee meeting uh, yet on it, waiting until they heard from you.
Okay, um, I'll just open it up for discussion, if you have any thoughts on this. Continue.
Okay, first, I just wanted to um, thank the planning department for the information that they shared with us, the analysis of the, the area map and so forth, they've gotten very valuable. I think that's the sign of information that the colon of the change should have been providing to us in advance. Um, since they moved, went on some of that research or potentially. I hope they would, anyway.
Sorry, Alden, if you could just, uh, pause, just, I just want to make sure, Richard and Bob, are you both able to hear uh, the comments in the room here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, sorry, go ahead, go on, I just wanted to make sure, given our uh, our audio situation, thank you.
I must, I must, I've gone back and forth on, on this one, um, seems, seem like I, I gathered the intent, the problem they're trying to solve with this is just to exclude um, housing developments from using the IPIF. Um, it's essentially that takes, takes the option away from the planning board to grant a special permit in that case. Um, so, um, in gen- in general, I think that um, residential development within the downtown should provide parking. Um, that's my, my general view, just because of the nature of the development, I'm assuming people are gonna have cars, they're gonna want to put them somewhere, and the fact that the idea of um, you know, just, it's just paving and it doesn't guarantee a space in the parking lot, and that they can't park overnight, it seems to me that the cars are not going to be parked in the parking lot. So, uh, anyway, I've gone back and forth, I, I don't see that much difference in approving the ordinance or, or not, it's, it's just the fact of um, I got step of going for the planning board. Um, so I guess I could go either way, um, but I, I don't necessarily see a reason for the, for the change. Um, I, and just in my, in my view, I think if someone does come before the planning board and and stuff, I think it's gonna be looked at with a pretty close scrutiny, before allowing them to have, have parking offsets. It's just my new.
If I could through the chair, uh, just to reiterate one thing, I think I, uh, referenced in our memo was just the fact that uh, the council, uh, has made it clear, at least to the parking clerk and the counselors that we've spoken to, there is a policy on the books about overnight parking, right, restrictions in the lots and, and to a lesser extent in the garage, uh, and also in terms of capacity, so um, we wanted to just point to that, the council certainly would have jurisdiction if we wanted to change the policy uh, there, and we, you know, we referenced that, because that would be something for the council to discuss after the planning was a recommendation. Um, but if you wanted to comment on that, um, but for now, we're, we're our memo was written with the premise that that is a restriction that's on the books, and so the thing to point out there was the potential conflict if the planning board is granting a special permit for off-street parking in a municipal lot, and um, and yet there's no actual physical place to put it, you know, folks could be parking on the street. Um, and um, you know, if that, if that were revisited, uh, maybe that would change the situation, but here, even if that uh, policy were to be reversed and you could park overnight, eventually, one might argue, there could be a sort of a capacity limitation with the lot, so, um, but we defer to council on that, that piece of this.
So I, I also appreciate that, I think it rightly pointed out that the situation is not as dire as for me, uh, that played out, but I'm still, I'm still not in favor for some of the same kind of fundamental principle reasons, um, that, that she said. Um, I mean, in my experience, in a lot of communities are urban, uh, the ITIF already goes beyond what a lot of communities have, I mean, the three hundred foot old public parking is fairly common in Massachusetts, I first encountered it in Cambridge twenty years ago. Um, and there was no ITI, I don't know what they had for some period of time, but ironically, Cambridge now has no parking whatsoever, and that's really the way most progressive zoning is going, um, so, and I'm especially opposed to it in this area, you know, I'm not with the parking regulation necessarily in all ways, as, as we start Cambridge, but I'm definitely more in that direction. Um, I, you know, if I was on the board, went to three market street was being approved, I probably would have granted more parking leads. I might have reached it in other ways, but not parking, as far as I'm concerned, the other thing I think that's really unfortunate is that public parking is had, is the perfect opportunity for counter cyclical use, and in a lot of progressive zoning developers be encouraged to combine residential, residential parking, because people can park overnight for the residential, in fact, there's a day, it's not a perfect one-to-one counter cyclical arrangement, but it's, it works pretty well, and so, I mean, I miss, unfortunately, I feel like I missed an opportunity as three council, whether we're here. Why do they feel this way that we cannot have parking at night, I think that's really a problem. Um, I don't think I would have responded to challenges on some of that. This kind of ordinance, I don't think it's going the right direction. So, I, I'm still, I'm still opposed to it, I mean, I think there may be some fixes, but I don't think this is not the fix that I was.
Thank you. Bob or Richard, you have any comments this way?
I do not.
Just, just a couple of comments for me, I, you know, I I hear what uh, is being said about, about shared parking. And, you know, in mixed-use environments, which is kind of what we're talking about downtown, uh, that, that certainly makes sense. Um, but I have concerns about how you might control the, the residential parking, so that there are not capacity issues during the day for visitor and commercial parking, so I, I think that, that's something that could be talked about, but, but there needs to be some kind of structure to it that, that limits the use of those lots for, for residential purposes, I, I am not particularly in favor of allowing that. Uh, I, I, I would support Counselor McCauley's amendment. Um, I think, uh, what, what you all have pointed out is that there, there would be no particular adverse impact, uh, converting commercial space to residential space downtown. Um, I look at the project, the new project at the foot of Market Street as a perfect example of, you know, a small site, small footprint, five residential units. Uh, parking eventually, given, given the process, but parking was eventually accommodated onsite for the residential units, with the understanding that the commercial parking requirement would, would get handled in you know, in the surrounding lots and, you know, commercial environment. So I, I think that's a formula that, that works, uh, and that can work on small sites, and, you know, could, could allow for, you know, a point of view that, that future residential development needs to accommodate parking onsite. You know, also a couple of comments about, about municipalities that are, are reducing or eliminating parking requirements. To- totally agree with that, you know, Boston and Cambridge have for years been, been trying to put a cap on the amount of parking that, that developments provide, and, and that number keeps moving down. But those are environments where there are lots of other transportation options. And, you know, I, I, I could be talked out of this point of view, but it, it still feels to me like Newburyport is a very automobile-dependent environment. Uh, and there are, there are less obvious transportation options, which would allow you to reduce parking requirements, because people could get around some other way. So, you know, I think that's worth talking about as well, but I think Counselor McCauley's point is, is a good one. Uh, we ought to have a point of view about residential parking across the city versus commercial parking, and, and I would support what he's proposing.
Uh, just for the record, Beth has joined the, the board here, and we're just doing comments on the zoning amendment, ITIF.
So I guess, um, my, it's kind of echoing Jamie's, I think we've got an artificially created parking shortage. The, the parking shortage is created by the, the council not wanting to let people park overnight in a municipal lot, so we have in the heart of our downtown, we've got this big lot, couple big ones, um, that are just empty pavement for eight or twelve hours in a day, um, and could be used, so I, I guess I have a and again, I don't feel like it's going to make a lot of, if I looked at actually the, the lot next to two to six market street, the lot at the eighty-five, eighty-seven Merrimack, which is where Purcellis is right now, that's actually a larger lot in square footage than the lot where two, two to six Merrimack is, so presumably mixed-use development could happen there, it's one of, it wasn't listed as one of the, I don't think it's one of the underutilized lots. Um, here, but it is really a very underutilized lot, and uh, could be, um, could be redeveloped for a more intensive use, possibly in the same way as two to six market street was, with stacked parking for the residential units. Um, we're going to be seeing a, a plan for the old gas station lot on Merrimack Street, which is also going to be a mixed-use development, but it's going to be providing all of its parking on site. So, um, I don't think it's a lot of great impact going either way here, but I do want to say that any residential parking shortage in the downtown has been created by the council by, by preventing parking overnight in these very large, um, parking lots. And I think it could be solved, partially solved, at least for the units downtown, it could treat the units within the three hundred foot radius of the parking lots, give them a residential parking, then they put overnight parking and figure out a way to manage them, so that the lots are, are emptied out in time for the, uh, ten o'clock in the morning, when it reduces, but business really picks up down that. Uh, so I, I guess I'm, again, I, I also could go either way, my tendency is to uh, be, be in favor of more flexible parking requirements and to use our municipal lots to, to the fullest extent possible, rather than moving them taken for a big chunk of the day. So, um, I guess, I guess what, in summary, what it really is, is this ordinance, proposed ordinance is only half of the issues, it's addressing one side, it's not addressing the supply side at all. And so I think that with a broader kind of more holistic approach, the parking downtown would be better rather than just planting down on residences. Um, preventing, possibly preventing, maybe not preventing, but possibly preventing highest to best use of properties that we have down. Anybody else?
I, I guess, just, just Rick, following up on, on your comment, I, I just, I mean, I think there needs to be a way of I mean, I think residential development in the downtown area would be a tremendous benefit to, to the city. Uh, it, it brings more residents in, into the center of city, it, it will help the, the businesses, it will help the restaurants. It, it would be a plus all the way around. But I, I worry about if, if there is that kind of added density of residential use, I worry about uh, where those cars go if they're not on those development sites. And, you know, I, I think it's a very difficult thing to control in the end, so I, I hear what you're saying. Uh, but I, I just would prefer that, that that residential parking requirement be dealt with on an incremental basis by the individual developers on their site.
Thank you. I had a question actually for you, Andy. At the last meeting, I think it was Councilor Cameron who, uh, referenced the new black cow, and, um, I was unclear, did the ITIF had created after that?
Uh, the ITIF was on the, if I'm not mistaken, the ITF was on the books at the time, but did not have the payment requirement in there, it was, you were allowed to use it for parking, um, the um, zoning board of appeals, uh, also as part of the approval process, and one of the reasons why that, if you, you see sort of the number of seats and the demand it's using, or it's, uh, you know, associated with in terms of parking, the ZBA did also as part of that process approve or allow up to the four hundred or so seats, and the parking that goes with that, so there was, I just, I point that out only here only because the board had some discretion, if they felt it was too much of an impact for very, you know, any particular reason, uh, in granting this special permit, they might have said, you know, you need to reduce the size of it, or because maybe they thought four hundred seats and all the seating um, would result in too many parking impacts on, say, Riverside Park, or the NRA West lot, or, you know, something like that. Uh, but otherwise, the ordinance was in effect, and they were able to utilize as a right the part, public parking within radius, which in this case, um, because of the timing included, because we had converted, um, where the city was managing parking on both the waterfront trust lot and the city's parking lots. It included both the Green Street parking lot, as well as both the NRA lots and the Riverside Park parking lot. Uh, even though it's waterfront trust, the city's part managing parking, so it became part of our parking spaces, so really effectively all parking um, almost entirely could have, you know, been provided by the public parking there.
I guess, um, it was, so three hundred foot radius, not the ITIF.
Uh, it was, there was a, uh, there was no payment requirement there, there's seven thousand five hundred dollars with the CPI index was not in there at the time.
I guess waterfront money is the prohibition on use of the waterfront, that property within the waterfront.
Uh, no, it's not.
Pretty enough, pretty horizontal.
Uh, we, we can go and take a look at that, but I just, yeah, and, okay, we, we can take a look at, maybe there's something that's illustrated.
The map shows that it's going all the way up to the waterfront.
Okay. Oh, sorry, sorry, um, what's that? Yeah, the parking lot may not.
The black house itself is within the.
Yeah, gotcha, I don't recall, I'd have to go back at this point, I don't recall the exact provision of the time, whether waterfront west, I might have already said something about waterfront west, but don't forget that the, um, there was a modification of the use that was there, that was going on as well.
Right, I guess what I'm just saying, so. I was just confused because Counselor Cameron referenced that in relation to why this was going forward. I didn't know whether there was a prohibition on waterfront west using city parking lots at the time.
Uh, I believe, if I'm, I, I'm gonna double check that, because I'd like to know for sure, before I answer that question, I believe that might have been in the books at the time, but I'd have to go back and check. Um, it's obviously in there today, but I just don't, I.
I just want all the, I was confused.
My recollection was that there's a provision in there, but I don't, I don't want to go double back and double check.
We'll have to go, we'll have to verify in the office, the previous period.
It'd be interesting though, because because it was given as an example, before we do this.
The payment was added.
The payment was added when?
After the block.
Was that, was that in?
Several years after.
Two thousand seventeen, I think.
Boy, awesome, so. Okay, um, any other comments or concerns, or you think that we're ready to discuss our recommendation to the city council, even if that recommendation is fixed, I think we, we need to have a report to the city council, and it's a report with recommendation. But we may just have a report, it doesn't have a recommendation.
So my thought is, give them a mix, a mixed report back and say they need to address the real issue. And since the other half that we're referring to, the issue that the parking is not. Doesn't, doesn't address it.
What is the timeline for, um, for planning and development, is that going to do agents, do we do something?
Um, well, I believe they, uh, just generally speaking, I think we'd have to hear from that camera in the chair, I don't think he's posted their meeting yet, their next meeting, um, but generally speaking, they probably will be looking to incorporate your feedback before the city councils committee reports, the full council, uh, with their opinion, they might want to take into account your, your feedback, so I imagine that in the next week or two, he's looking to schedule their meeting, they have a next regular scheduled meeting, if they use that date, next, uh, Thursday, the twenty-third.
Um, so I'm just thinking about Rick's suggestion of overnight parking. And I'm just trying to figure out what that looks like. On practical, like, people can park there until seven AM, eight AM, then what happens after that? Not everybody is, and they will find a place on the street, and we still have a problem. Do our parking. For businesses. Our people that are gonna find their artists, using their artists, still a problem. So, I don't know what that looks like on a daily basis, um, as a solution, I also just wanna, Andy, you just mentioned that a black cow, as upright could rely on this parking, but I just, it's not as right, right, and so have some discretion to.
Right, now, I guess what I wanted to know maybe at the time was, it was as of right, you could use that, um, and I don't think the special permit was associated with that. Um, but certainly the ITF payment was not required at the time, so there wasn't a multiplication of seven thousand five hundred times all the parking requirements for that you, that space, and maybe that might have factored differently for the development or the use of that property, had that been a requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder. Question, uh, allow it in some cases, but not others, or is there a size of a, you know, residential development that that a single family who's really, um, not required parking, but it was over certain units that we draw a line. The question is how we, data will probably, but we still we want our.
Senator, could you?
Yeah, I.
Do you pick a microphone?
Hi.
If it's green, it's on.
I hope you got the memo that was sent around, um, so the, the residential units that are the potential residential units upstairs in existing buildings won't be required to add any parking spaces, those would all be sort of added into this mix, and, and that's where I think the utilization of the parking lots it, it may address that, uh, deficit that it already exists, never mind adding. But I think that is an important thing to look at, but, um, you're saying of one, a one family or two family, um, adding a one family or two family standalone is not allowed in the downtown, um, and it's in my thinking, very unlikely that any of these underutilized lots would get developed as just one unit or two, you're going to build a building downtown? It's going to be. So, I, I know there is an example, we saw one unit above Campbell's Shop. Uh, you know, but I think those are a few, few, few and part of the from. On, on the underutilized or underdeveloped. But I do think that technology has changed, I'm speaking with parking enforcement. Technology has changed greatly in order to, uh, that it would make something like overnight parking much more feasible than it might have been when this, um, policy, if you will, um, was started of not allowing overnight parking, it, it was an issue, you could, uh, as the clerk said, you could see cars that would sit there for long periods of time, but, uh, with the standing of license plates and things like that, now, I, I do think that there are methods that different communities utilize to enforce this sort of allowance to have overnight, but need to vacate during the day.
It's, it's the uses like the, the black cow that, that I think concern me relative to this, now, I I guess maybe the black cow and the parking lot adjacent doesn't fall within the three hundred foot radius of, of very much of what we're talking about, but but if you think about that kind of use, which, which is particularly intensive in the evening. And at a point where you would want to allow residential traffic back into those lots, let's, let's say you established six o'clock in the evening as the point where a resident could could use a public parking lot again, and, and that is in conflict with, you know, a a major restaurant use and traffic generated like that at their peak hours. It's those kinds of situations that, that I think could become problematic as we go forward. Uh, this is why I think it's just kind of difficult to control.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, I guess, this, you know, your, your comment about having more flexibility, I think with the special permit, we have pretty much excellent flexibility. Maybe we want to have more standards added. I guess, what are, what are the projects, the number and size of projects that are going to cause problems in the future? If we allow use of the ITIF, the residential, and, um, so what, what are the problems that are going to come if we don't change the ordinance? What are the problems that are going to, what are the restrictions on redevelopment that might happen if we do change the ordinance, and those are two types of impacts. I, and, or actually, I wanted to ask, um, Jennifer, what happens with a, are, are there many single families or two families in this area right now, you know?
There are some in the R three that's to the south. Um, and sort of above the library. There are not, and then there are some on the sort of western side. Sorry, yeah, the western side, the block beyond Sitcom Street. But there, there really are not any single families in the, the downtown core.
I was just, I was just thinking about some of a case which, a real de minimis case, which would be adding a unit, you know, turning. You know, turning a two into a three or a one into a two or something like that. Then we'd be, then we'd be prohibiting that type of.
I, I think that right now that is prohibited in any way. Um, you're allowed to add residential units as part of an excuse. But you wouldn't be able to just add them as part of a non-conforming residential one or two.
So in order to do that, you need a variance, in case you get the parking variance also.
You'd need a very, a huge variance, which we don't allow right now.
So it's just forbidden, so there's nothing, anything that is stuck as a, as a one or a two or even a three or four.
Oh, a one and two family are prohibited, multi, um. Multi, I actually don't think we, no, we do allow multi-family. So that, that potentially could be further subdivided or the number of units increased. I don't think we have, again, there are a number of those above. South of the library. And some of those have, because I pointed some of them out, they've got large parking lots that. Yes, if someone wanted to come in and build up additional units on top of the parking lots there. Um, adjacent to, we do have zero allowing setbacks in some of these districts. They, they could look to expand the number of units on those parks.
We're going from a two family to a four family will be a change of use, correct? And that would, and that use is not, that use is allowed, but it's only allowed as part of the, in the business districts, as part of the excuse.
It is my recollection that street next views in the business district or that, that street residential in the business district is not allowed. It's only allowed, um, but when you look at this three hundred foot buffer. Once we change to R three, the, we do have some permitted and, and. Multi families, so those are the ones where that potential growth could happen.
Can I ask a question, uh, Peter Jennifer, or Katie? I, I made an assumption, but I realized now maybe it was a false assumption. So maybe you can help me. My, when I first read this, I thought my, my instinct was this will create more non-conform structures. Do you know if that's true or not?
No, the, this, this just prevents new structures or converted structures. From tapping into this special permit allowance. It won't create any non-conformities and any new non-conformities.
Is that by virtue of the fact that those, those, those structures are grandfathered, but the use still doesn't have a, so you could have a residential. Unit without a parking space, it's grandfathered, so it's legally not conformant, but it's still not conformant.
Yes, but it's, it's pre-existing non-conforming and as long as you don't change it, it stays that way.
I guess the guiding principle for me that is not absolute, but applies to a lot of zoning changes generally is. If an ordinance change is making things more non-conforming that are exists, that we already like. So, so, and I made that assumption. I think I was wrong in making that assumption, but I still feel like there are a lot of residents moving stuff now, obviously. And if an ordinance makes it harder to create more of those. That we like, we like the way that texture of the city that to me is, is my direction for me. But, but I realize the numbers don't necessarily, that's more of the intuition.
I think one of the, one of the points that Jennifer made at our last meeting is, was very important is that, um. This, this does not affect in any way the conversion of a commercial space to a residential space. Because the commercial space would tend to have a higher parking requirement per square foot than, than. The equivalent residential space. So. So it doesn't make things more non-conforming. But everything in the downtown is non-conforming. Uh, so it's just letting, it's actually moving you to a less, less of a parking than. So it makes you less non-conforming to go from commercial to residential.
Yeah, it's a strange twist, I, but I agree with you. I agree with you. And, and I think you said this in, in the first hearing, that was really. That he made is, and the mental health, the. Uh, lay down homework. So that's very helpful.
Through the chair.
Feel like going back to the commerce, that's really the problem, is that we still have this underutilized space. And there are dozens of examples of developers being required to, to mix parking. So I think municipalities should get on board with what they're making like developers do, maybe try to, yeah, and. I think it's great that technology is better now. It would have been a lot harder ten years ago. Um, so I would like to see more of that. And see what the use of residences using the parking lots that we already have overnight, what that would look like. There's probably some limit where it doesn't work anymore. So you have to think about that limit too, but that would be the limit I would.
If, if I go through the chair, just I was double checking as we were having this conversation here. Um, it looks like the two thousand seventeen amendment. Um, I did not recall this, but the city council actually was the special permit granting authority back then. Um, there was a file, it looks like from the amendment, there was a five thousand dollar fee, um, that would be paid. I don't recall there being any, uh. I can't recall any special permits associated with that, at least during the time that I've been here. Um, but especially, it looks like the city council was a special permit granting authority. The waterfront west prohibition was added to the ordinance, the seven thousand five hundred dollars plus CPI index was added. Um, and the plan board has made the special permit granting authority, um, for that. There might be, you know, some other details in there, but just to clarify, there was a question asked about where we were.
Thank you. So, um. I, I'm probably guilty of mixing up a few things that aren't necessary, as the more we talk about it, the more I see the, the issue of the. Such a shared use of municipal lot, being, uh, uses that have different peaks is something we should be thinking about. Even if, whichever way we go on. Um, and as I look around the downtown, um, and look at, you know, the map that the planning office provided. Uh, and also adding in shortlist site in the corner of, uh. Market and Baraback. It doesn't seem like. In most cases restricting. Approving this amendment would make much of a difference. Doesn't seem like it would affect very many properties. Unless, you know, unless people feel, you know, otherwise. Based on what the allowed uses are, the B three district, the B three district, the one hundred, and the, um. The limited number of, uh, existing residential uses and the ability to convert upper floor. Uh, office to residential without impacting, uh, in this right. It seems as though, um. Adopting, I don't like the amendment, but it seemed like adopting the amendment wouldn't have much, make much of a difference. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not. No, so I guess that's my feel. I feel, I feel like that we could. I, I came in thinking I would like to oppose it, and I'm at this point feeling less opposed to it. But also continuing to feel that we should encourage the council to more efficiently use. For large amounts of pavement that exists downtown.
Just, just to add what you're saying, if we, if we do approve this, then it just takes away the flexibility like. Mentioning in the rare case, you might want the flexibility. That seems to be the only, the only difference.
So are there? Can anybody think of? A development that would really be a problem, a type, type development that you'd like, that would really be adversely affected by this, this amendment?
Uh, just, this is, I'm not a board member, just speaking for myself, as far as, I don't have that concern myself. Um, you know, maybe sort of like what you're saying and some of the dialogue that Jennifer and I have had, and it's sort of summarizing memo. I, I don't necessarily feel that that's problematic. Um, to me that the priority, I think downtown, generally speaking, I think should be for the commercial uses of those spaces. I don't necessarily disagree. Um, I'm not keen on having, you know, vacant lots or, you know, underutilized lands, so it must be, you know, maybe even overnight. Um, it could be maybe put to better use, but at the same time, I don't necessarily see that we would harm ourselves by prohibiting residential development, which I agree would be good. You know, is good and, and will continue to be good for reinforcing downtown businesses is having residential in close proximity. So. Um, I just don't feel it'll be adversely impacted per se, based on.
And I guess I just, the other thing I'm thinking is that. Yes, all of those upper floor spaces can be converted to residential without a legal impact on parking. But in fact, there will be a real impact on parking, which will go out into the neighborhoods. So oddly, allowing overnight parking in the Green Street lot might provide some relief for some in neighborhood. And that might be some of the things, one of the things to think about.
Well, just in the spirit of brainstorming, I mean, I think we focused a lot on vacant lots and existing structures. But our expansion to existing structures and probably not in front yards or along the street, but maybe it's back, back areas that are not parking lots now. Um, I, you know, I don't have a sense of how many of those kinds of development opportunities are might be out there, but that's. That's the one thing that comes to mind that we just haven't covered.
Do we? It's a good point, but I, I would like to look at. Um, do we feel like we're not ready to make a re- a recognition at this point? Uh, or, and would like to continue it, do some more thinking about some of those issues or? Do we feel like we just?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I think that that would mean meeting again, your next regular meeting on the fifth of, discussing once again.
Yeah, yeah. And we had talked last time about not having a meeting on the fifth, but it turns out that we are having a meeting on the fifth because of. Continuance of, uh.
It, it may be just because of the varied opinions about different details of this or, um, you know, side comments or things that might be worth noting in the memo. If you're, if you're giving one to the council here, um, I don't know whether it helps at all for someone, unfortunately, you, you do a good job with this, Rick, but maybe. Preparing some sort of narrative that the board members could review because it would be hard, you know, on the fly, especially if there's a few other members who aren't here tonight. Um, to issue that final opinion. It might be hard if it's time of the meeting and I don't know if somebody wants to take a stab at sort of characterizing.
We've had a lot of issues to talk about tonight, um, and. I can certainly take a stab at listing those issues and, and talking about. You know, that, that issue that Jamie just raised is, is a very good one. Um, but it involves looking at the, at the, at the existing parcel map. And seeing where some of those places might be. And so I think that, uh, I would, I'd be happy to do that. Unless somebody feels strongly that we need to take action. And, and you're right, it might be easier to work from reviewing the document. Any, um, any suggestions, any opinions on this? Does anybody feel a strong need to make a motion to? Okay, so we'll continue, continue the discussion. Okay, that's good. Uh, I think a lot of good points were brought up. It'd be very, very helpful to have all of those in a. Okay. And I think. So approval of that, approval of minutes of, uh, the March first meeting. Um, I have sent my comments to Caitlin. Uh, does anybody, anybody have any other comments they wanted to make to those minutes? Yes. Okay, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, March first. I'll move to approve the minute of March, sorry, if you're ordering the second. Amy, thank you. Um, okay, we do a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the minutes are approved. Thank you. Thank you, Caitlin, for doing it again. I hope you make sense of the next.
Everyone talk close to your mic.
Uh, are there any other updates?
Uh, it's just one I wanted to mention, just so that I don't get an influx of, of, you know, inquiries on it, so to speak. Um. The, we know we have these MBTA communities guidelines. There's, there's lots of other pieces. Jennifer and I have talked about really getting heavily into, um. Some of the zoning amendments and the rewrite things that we had wanted to do, clean up and whatnot. Um, putting aside for a moment the fact that there are some policy things still to be, you know, worked on in the ordinance and, uh, things are either active now or will be coming up in the future. Whether it be waterfront west, you know, short-term maintenance is on the, on the table again right now. Um, but there are some other areas to address, but. Here, we're talking about doing some cleanup, but I wanted to just mention briefly for the MBTA communities guidelines, given that we have until December of, um, twenty four for that. We do have some time. One of the things I would like to take into account before, uh, we start plowing into the details of that. Um, in light of the fact that we have built out in the forty hour district, we might have, there's been discussions about residential, maybe added towards the Story Avenue, Low Street area. Um, and we have the waterfront west, you know, build out and of course the usual sort of routine infill that might be happening around the city. For one process or another. Um, I have reached out to, although we do have a little bit of transition with our public services department right now, um, on the admin side. Uh, I'm trying to get a little bit more information from the water division, uh, the sewer division and, uh, potentially some of their consultants about. Our actual capacity of the plants and also the geographic distribution, um, lines and the collection system, you know, lift stations. What our limitations might be, so that before we start, um, making assumptions about where we can support build out and growth, um, beyond what we already know might be supportable in the forty hour district. Um, here where the state's referencing twelve, twelve hundred and ninety-two units as opposed to the five hundred and forty that the district originally was expected to build out. Um, just that we have a good idea of how does that play out for the future build out that we're talking about. Um, you know, in the forty hour district in particular, waterfront west and Story Avenue, Low Street area. Um, you know, as sort of nodes for the city where some of that new growth redevelopment might happen, maybe less so in the, you know, as infill in the national registered district, for instance. Um, yeah, but, um, don't forget, and this is the other reason for the analysis, is we have two other communities that are served by our, um, water and sewer. So I wanted to make sure that we're also considering any future growth that might be happening there. So what in essence I'm saying is that, um. I, I might want to sort of wait another month or two before we get heavily into the options there, mainly so I can get a little bit more information from, um. The, um, utilities end of things. So we have a good idea of if we are expected to have further growth, that as, does that also assume we're doing substantial capital improvements for? Some of our plants, um, or is it exceeding our D E P withdrawal permit for the water supply? Um, things like that, so that we have, you know, it's responsible land use planning. Um, but I'd like to get some of that information first and then circling back on where we've talked before. Laying out some options on the map and then having a dialogue here with the city council, getting really in depth about. What map changes do we want to make? What zoning changes do we want to make in order to comply with the state's requirements, but do so in a responsible way?
So the following up on that, I just got the packet, it was for tomorrow's meeting of the, uh, our background plan commission. And I saw that the commission has, I knew this, I was reminded by the packet, that the commission received. An extra amount of funding for direct local technical assistance. And one of the things they're suggesting could be used for is. Doing the analysis for any of the communities. So you might be able to use some of the time while you're getting the information. To, and I can, I can help follow up on that, to, um, see if we can tap into some of that money and maybe hire some consultant help. To help us move forward again.
That'd be great. Thank you. Happy to do, uh, work with you on that. Um, obviously, um, it, it, obviously it may not fill the gap as well with the water and sewer on, because we need their utility expert internally, but. Here, that'd be fantastic. It may also, um, go with some other resources you may have available to us, but that would be fantastic. Um, we obviously want to get the best end result. And so as much resources applied to this and the options presented, um, we'll come back with the best possible option for the city. Thank you.
Uh, can they hope for any updates for us? Okay, um, in that case, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll vote to adjourn.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, okay, final roll call.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Amy, yes. Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes, awesome. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Looking at the screen, but I don't think they can see me.